Union Station Auditorium. My name is John Evans of WECT News. I'm honored to be here on behalf of our organization and our partners at WHQR Public Media and Port City Daily, organizing this forum this evening of forums. We will first hear from candidates who are running for seats on the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners. We will go for approximately about an hour and then somewhere around 7:10, 7:15, we will hear from candidates who are running for the New Hanover County Board of Education. I will be asking each one of the candidates several umbrella questions that they will respond to. I have done my best to make sure not everyone is answering first, not everyone is following the same person each time. Each one of the candidates will get an opportunity to have an opening statement. We'll do some questions that I will ask, that everybody will answer. And we have reporters from our three media organizations who will ask questions that they developed of the specific candidates, to the specific candidates, but also questions that we have had mailed in to our organizations. And if you would like, there are some cards and pens on the table where you walked in. You can write down a question and submit it this evening to our group of reporters, and they will break it down and we will be able to ask some of those questions as well. I do want to introduce the three reporters who will be asking questions in this first forum. They are Kelly Canoyer from WHQR. They are WECT's Ava Brenngord will also be asking questions, and Brenna Flanagan from Port City Daily. You have to excuse Brenna from getting up. She's got a couple of friends here in the form of crutches she is dealing with, so she is making her way through the pain this evening to be here, and we appreciate that. There are three open seats on the November ballot in the New Hanover County Commissioners' race. The candidates, as you get this evening, we will not have time to give you opportunities to specifically rebut something else that another candidate has said. You can take time in your normal answer if you'd like to specifically rebut something that one of the candidates has said. We do want to say that we did hear from County Commissioner Candidate Dane Scales this past weekend. He let us know that he had a scheduling conflict and would not be able to be with us. Candidate Bill Rivenbark has not let us know that he was not coming, so hopefully he will make it as the night goes on, and we will be able to get some answers from him as well. We're going to begin with an opening statement from our candidates. They'll have 60 seconds. We have Shay Carver down front here, who will be manning the clock and let you know when your 60 seconds is up. But we're going to go in alphabetical order for our opening statements, and first we will hear from New Hanover County Commissioner Candidate Jonathan Barfield. Mr. Barfield, 60 seconds for your opening statement, sir.
Well, good evening. My name is Jonathan Barfield Jr., and I say junior because my father Jonathan Barfield Sr. also served as the county commissioner here from 1980 to 1992. A little factoid, since 1898, there have been two African-American county commissioners in this county, and the two happen to be father and son. My wife Laura and I have been married for 36 years. We have four beautiful daughters, two great son-in-laws, and two awesome grandsons, as well as a pretty cool dog. I've pretty much been raised in Hanover County. I came here at the age of one, you know, following my dad and my mom, who married up in Ohio. And it's really been an honor to serve as one of your county commissioners for the past 15 and a half years. I've served as chair and vice chair on the board, and it's really been a unique pleasure in helping to set the pace, but also have your fingerprints on the things that you see when you drive around the other county, the development and the growth that's taking place here. For me, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve. You know, I don't take this service lightly. I don't take this mantle of leadership lightly either, recognizing that we are a voice for all citizens in our community. And again, I'm honored that you've allowed me to serve for the past 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next for his opening statement this evening, we will go to New Hanover County Commissioner Candidate John Hennett. Mr. Hennett, you have 60 seconds, sir.
Yeah, thank you to the media consortium for having us today. My name is John Hennett. I'm a, my father's second generation Hanover County resident. I've owned a restaurant in downtown Wilmington, so I know what the challenges are operating in this local economy. I've served as an economic developer for Wilmington Downtown Inc., where I played a role in assisting 50 businesses and locating downtown that created over 500 jobs. And in my most recent profession as a residential praiser and commercial real estate broker, I've assisted in the adaptive reuse of some of the nuisance hotels along Market Street that have been converted to apartments with student workforce housing that is tied to the projects. I've been married for 24 and a half years to my wife Jamie. We've got two kids, 22 and 19. We have a beautiful little Aussie doodle dog and two cats that kind of control the house, and I'm excited to be here, so thank you for having us.
Mr. Hennett, thank you, sir. We would go to Bill Rivenbark for his opening statement. He has not joined us, so we will next go to, for her opening statement this evening, New Hanover County Commissioner Candidate Cassidy Santa-Guerra. Ms. Santa-Guerra, you have 60 seconds, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Cassidy Santa-Guerra, and I am running for county commissioner because over the next four years, our Board of Commissioners is going to make decisions that fundamentally impact the future county that our children inherit. We have grown tremendously over the last few years, but we haven't always scaled effectively. And as a result, we're looking at soaring housing costs and increased burden on traffic, infrastructure, and schools, and we're watching green spaces diminish. I moved here in 2016 to raise my family, but also to follow a career opportunity at a young tech startup called Encino. In my six years on the software engineering leadership team at Encino, I helped scale our company from about 25 software engineers located here in Wilmington to hundreds of engineers across five global offices. And we experienced one of the most successful tech IPOs of the century. So the leadership and experience I bring with scale and growth and change is exactly what we need on the Board of Commissioners to ensure a bright future for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We would go to Dane Scales for his opening statement at this time. He has told us he has a scheduling conflict, will not join us this evening. So for her opening statement, we will now go to New Hanover County Commissioner Candidate Stephanie Walker. Ms. Walker, you have 60 seconds, ma'am.
Thank you, John. Of course, my name is Stephanie Walker, and I'm running for New Hanover County Commission, but I am a current school board member here in New Hanover County, have been since 2020. It has been a very huge eye-opening experience for me to be on the school board, and so I'm able to see a lot of things that we really need to do with our public schools. A little bit about me, I'm a local, proud graduate of New Hanover High School, and I have a degree in public administration from UNCW. I've served on several boards and committees, and I have also this year been named a State Hunt Policy Fellow. I've been busy doing the work of the people here. I love my community. We have a lot of things to work on, and I really would like to see it thrive for the future. We have housing affordability issues, issues with our environment that we really need to look at, and we also have, well, I forgot to talk about my cool cats. I forgot to talk about the pets, sorry. No, I didn't want to forget them. No, I, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. I'm going to ask an umbrella question, the first one for the, for all of the candidates. And I will, again, I have tried to make it so that not every candidate always answers first, doesn't follow the same one. In this instance, Mr. Rivenbark would have been asked the question first, so unfortunately it falls to Ms. Walker, who would have been second in the rundown here. So, Ms. Walker, 60 seconds, ma'am. The question is, the New Hanover Community Endowment will put upwards of $50 million a year into the community, but it's accountable only to county commissioners and Novant Health. So the question, what are your priorities when it comes to appointments to this board? And will you commit to transparency in your decision-making regarding board members?
Thank you for that question. The endowment is a puzzle. It is going through some things right now. I will definitely be transparent. What I'd like to see people on the endowment board that are, I would like to see local folks, but if not, people that have varied backgrounds, that know a lot about a lot of different things and have experience with the issues, specifically the four pillars that the endowment was supposed to cover, if I'm not mistaken, education, housing, safety, and equity. Those four things are super important, the endowment. Even though I wasn't a fan of the hospital cell per se, I do know that this is a unique opportunity Hanover County has to change our community for generations. So I'm anxious to get involved and see how we can make it work for this community, and it's a lot of money, and it could do a lot of good, and that's what I want it to do.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Santa-Guerra, what are your priorities when it comes to appointments to the New Hanover Community Endowment Board? And will you commit to transparency in your decision-making regarding board members?
Yes, thank you. I will start by saying that I will commit to transparency when it comes to decisions regarding appointing board members. In terms of what I think is important in appointing members to the endowment board, I really want to take a look at the opportunity that we have with the endowment to really transform what it means to live in this county for the better. 20 years from now, my daughter will be nearing her 30th birthday, and we'll have invested a billion or more dollars through the endowment in this county, and I want people on the board that have been working to transform this county for the better and that will continue to do so for the next 20 years. This is an incredible investment that we can make in our community, and it's important that we have people on the board who know how to do this work, who have been committed to this work, and can operate the endowment with transparency, with understanding what success looks like and how we're going to get there. And I think that those folks need to be representative of the community that they exist in.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hennett, what are your priorities when it comes to appointments to the New Hanover Community Endowment Board? Will you commit to transparency in your decision-making regarding future board members?
Absolutely. We'll commit to transparency. I think sunshine always does a lot of good on government actions and government undertakings. I think it's important that we appoint the most qualified candidates. I think it's important that we have candidates that understand the goal and the original intent of the endowment. I think that it's important that we have an endowment that's sitting at the table as the government is addressing some of the social ills and challenges of our community. I stated a week and a half ago at the Power Breakfast that if the county or the city is having a meeting and they're discussing a challenge, it would be nice if the endowment was sitting at the table and said, hey, I think we can handle that, and handle capital projects and handle some social ills. So I think that when it comes to addressing the appointments, I think it's important that we get the most qualified candidates we can, make sure they understand the strategic plan of the county and the four pillars of the endowment. So I absolutely support transparency.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barfield, what are your priorities when it comes to future appointments to the New Hanover Community Endowment Board? And will you commit to transparency in your decision-making regarding future board members?
I've always committed to transparency. It should have taken place in the beginning of the first members on the endowment. The reality is Commissioners Zapata and myself have never weighed in at one time on who's been appointed to the endowment. Three commissioners have sat together and made a decision who they're going to appoint without any transparency whatsoever. And that's, in my opinion, why we've gotten into the place that we are now with staff resigning, the CEO leaving the organization as well because of the inner turmoil. The last time that William Bussard spoke to our board of commissioners, I was very critical of the work that the endowment had been doing with their first round of investments in our community, over 20 some million dollars given to UNCW and Cape Fear Community College, when the intent, in my opinion, is one of those that voted to sell the hospital, and part of the initial conversation was to help fund our local nonprofits, to put money into affordable housing, and the things that, the grassroots organizations that make our community run and grow and go. And instead giving money to state institutions where they have resources coming from the state level, to me, was a total dereliction of duty. And I'm happy to see that now they're putting money into some of the housing programs in our community, but...
Thank you, sir. Candidates, I'd like to, if we can, New Hanover County Schools, the next umbrella question is going to be rather simple. It's going to be more a show of hands for two quick questions that I'd like to ask you, and then we're going to get to some of the audience questions from our reporters. But it is no secret that the New Hanover County school system is in need of some newer buildings, that there are construction issues that need to be handled with the school system in the next five to 10 years. So by a show of hands, would you support a bond for school construction to go on the ballot in 2026? Yes? All four would. Another show of hands, would you also support any kind of property tax increase to fund other infrastructure projects in New Hanover County? I know it's not, just would property tax increase be an option to fund infrastructure improvements? Okay. Just curious if you would try to get a commitment. Thank you. But we do know all four of you said you would support a bond for school construction on the ballot in 2026. Thank you. We're going to get to some audience questions now with our reporters. You'll have 90 seconds to answer in this part of our evening, and we're going to start with Ava Brenngord from WECT. Ava?
All right, hello. So the first question is for John Hennett. Mr. Hennett, this is from a constituent. So flooding has been on everyone's minds lately. Brunswick County may consider a temporary moratorium on new development. Would you support a moratorium on new development here in New Hanover County, at least until the comprehensive plan update has been completed?
No. I would support increased standards for stormwater ponds presently, like in the city of Wilmington. A new subdivision is only required to build 25-year stormwater ponds. I would definitely support doubling that. I think that moratorium's not the solution. I think better governance is. I think that we also have to remember that with regards to the most recent storm that hit Caroline Beach, it was, it coincided with a lunar high tide. We don't need rain for lunar high tide to flood the streets of Caroline Beach or Water Street in downtown Wilmington. So we have to be better prepared to know when these things are coming. I think it takes better communication from our county, alerting residents that while there's a low-pressure system, it's also coinciding with a lunar high tide. Those businesses along Caroline Beach could have prepared. Tony Salavani lost almost everything in his store because he wasn't warned that there might be potential rising waters. So I think we could probably improve our standards on development, specific to stormwater. I know that, I don't work on the development side, but when I'm selling a piece of property the developer wants to redevelop, I see the site plan five minutes before the community does at the community meetings, and I always ask them the standard questions. Tell me about your density. Tell me more about your site plan. Show me your stormwater, and they always say, we're doing a 25-year plan. And I always say, if you would double that capacity, you would eliminate one of the objections to your plan.
Next question is for Jonathan Barfield. Mr. Barfield, there's been a growing level of concern in the community about the reckless and unsustainable amount of development in the county. For instance, clearcutting, high-density rezoning, construction of wetlands. What do you plan to do to address these concerns, and what specific actions will you take to reassure the citizens that you represent them and not the developers and other special interests?
We're in the process now of updating our 2016 comprehensive land use plan. Prior to 2016, the county had not had a plan in place at all. We're using the Camel Land Use Plan, which was definitely antiquated and outdated. But recognizing that our county has grown immensely since 2016, it's time to update that plan to make sure it's the right size for our community right now. I'm thankful that NCDOT is doing some really smart things when it comes to making traffic flow better, looking at putting flowers at every intersection on M K Parkway from Military Cut Off to Eastwood Road, to Market Street, to College Road, to Carr Avenue, making sure the traffic can flow smoothly as opposed to not, as well as giving another north-south direction on Independence going all the way to M K Parkway as well to make sure the traffic flows better. I think once we get the traffic flowing better, things will be a whole lot better for our citizens in our community. At the same time, with this comprehensive land use plan, it'll let us know exactly where we should be putting resources. We're looking at putting water and sewer in the last frontier, the northern part of our county, the Castle Hainian, Reichport area. And to me, putting the infrastructure in place ahead of time will prepare us for the growth that's going to take place in that area as opposed to homes being built and there's no infrastructure there. At the same time, working with the folks at Riverlights, we may possibly put a new school in that particular area of our community as well to accommodate the growth that's taking place in the southern part of our county. We're trying to be as proactive as we can as we look at growth throughout Hanover County. And again, having grown up here, I've seen this place changed by leaps and bounds. It's not the town that I grew up in for sure.
This question from a constituent is for Stephanie Walker. The county commissioners are responsible for ensuring our schools structurally safe and that we have enough schools to meet demands for increased student populations. Currently, New Hanover High School is crumbling and a wing is closed. Isaac Bear has an inadequate trailer to serve as their school building. Other schools are overcrowded or in need of repair. Do you feel that the county commissioners have lived up to their responsibility, and how will you respond to the capital needs of the district?
Let me get me on that one. I can speak a lot about the capital improvements, being on this board for four years, and especially coming up to this discussion on a bond, and being a Hanover graduate. It was a mess when I went there, and it is unsafe. The question about whether commissioners have done enough, I don't want to be rude and say that they haven't done things. They have. There was a school bond 10 years ago. At the same time, knowing the amount of work that needs doing to our schools, and the fact that New Hanover High School is falling apart, I feel like someone should be, you know, should have done something a long time ago about Hanover, because it's a shame to see a school like that in the shape that it's in, in an unsafe way. So, I mean, I could, we could all turn on and criticize people in the past. There are a lot of good things that have happened in our county improvement, and to Jonathan's point, I've been here my whole life too. It has changed tremendously, and we've had to grow with that. But the schools definitely do need help, and they are going to need a bond unless the endowment wants to pay for it.
Thank you. I would have had a question for Bill Rivenbark if he were here from a constituent related to flooding and the growth needs of this county, but because he's not here, I'll waste my time.
Like the crutch, it adds to sense. It's nice. So I was going to have a question for Commissioner Dane Scales, but as you can see, he is not here. So my next question is for Cassidy. And this comes from another constituent. They say, I have lived in New Hanover County for 18 years. The decisions made by our local county commissioners have hurt my quality of life. We lack infrastructure, rising flood insurance costs, few amenities for locals, the beach is less accessible than it once was, our schools are struggling. What will you do to improve the quality of life here for residents?
Thank you. That's an excellent question. I think that, you know, as others have spoken about, as we, as the county looks at the next version of its comprehensive plan, I think it's going to be important to look at the vision that we have for the entire county and the community, and what we want to do in terms of quality of life. I think that it's incredibly important that we think about infrastructure and putting in infrastructure before we build, thinking about schools, thinking about traffic impacts before we make decisions about particular developments, so that we aren't just building, you know, walls and ceilings for people to live in, and then it's difficult for them to get around town. I think another thing that's really important in terms of quality of life is understanding that as we grow, we need a robust public transportation system in the region to help us get cars off the road. And that public transportation system needs to be something that serves both people who need to ride the bus and choice riders, people who want to ride the bus, to various amenities throughout the county, like the beaches, like entertainment venues, et cetera. So I think it's going to be really important in terms of our quality of life that we think about how our county is growing and how we're scaling, and we think about all of those issues prior to making the decisions around developments and where we build and how we build and win. Thank you.
Candidates, we will now move to questions developed by our reporters of the three media organizations. In this instance, Dane Scales would have been the first question asked by our Ava Brenngord. Mr. Scales is not here, so Ava will begin with a question for Ms. Santa-Guerra. Ava?
All right. So homelessness is one of the top concerns in the Cape Fear Region, and it's worsened by limited resources and a housing shortage. What role should the county commission take in addressing homelessness, and how would you play a part?
So addressing the needs of our unhoused population, I think is going to be incredibly important as we address the overall housing crisis here in the county. I think that the county needs to work with organizations that are already addressing issues of homelessness and helping folks that are experiencing homelessness on their journey back to permanent housing. I think that we need to focus on housing first as a solution for homelessness and expanding the offerings that we have here in the region in terms of supporting folks that are experiencing homelessness. As I said, I think the county should play a big role in the partnership that they have with the city. I'm pleased with, you know, the announcement from the endowment in terms of how they're going to support housing, because our housing crisis is occurring across the spectrum of housing, and I think we are seeing folks in the county experiencing homelessness that we typically wouldn't think of that, particularly children and seniors. And it's going to be incumbent upon the county to be a big participant in solving that issue here. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. You mentioned expanding options in the region. What would those options look like?
So I think it's going to be, we need to make sure that we have enough emergency shelter beds available for the folks that need that. It's incredibly heartbreaking to know that folks are getting turned away from emergency shelters. And I think we also need to look at expanding permanent supportive housing options that will allow folks to move out of that emergency shelter situation into long-term, more permanent housing that allows them to build out the stability that they need to continue to move up that housing spectrum. Thank you.
This question is for Commissioner Jonathan Barfield. You are the only sitting commissioner who voted to sell New Hanover County Hospital, who's still on the board. Looking back, how do you feel about that decision that was somewhat controversial, and how it ended up playing out?
I think the decision is still controversial for many, but I stand by the decision that I made with the information that I had at that time. You know, recognizing that every hospital in our country, no one predicted COVID-19 would take place. It disrupted not only hospitals across our country, but every business in our community. Restaurants were closed on many days because they didn't have the right staffing in place to provide for their customers coming in. At the same time, the endowment with the $1.3 billion that's set aside can do tremendous things for our community if invested properly, if the right attention is paid. But looking at where Novant is now, expanding and building a new hospital in Scottsdale is going to indeed increase capacity for the hospital. The current, the former lease that we had with New Hanover did not allow them to build outside of our county. They couldn't borrow money and build outside of our county, and they were concerned about another hospital coming in and taking the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, where they may be doing knee surgeries or back surgeries and taking some of the profit margins from the local hospital here. So giving them the ability to expand outside of our region would allow the hospital to grow, and that's when the conversation around the sale took place. And again, I do stand beside behind that decision to sell the hospital. I think there are greater days ahead, looking at the two micro Jordan clinics that have been built, one on Greif Field Street, one's being built on Princess Place Drive, is going to serve some of our underserved areas in our community, things that probably would not have happened had NHRMC still on the hospital. And so I think more members of our community will be served in a much better way, and equity will indeed take place. I'm thankful they have a great health equity department, as I speak of equity, that's making sure they serve the needs of the entire community and not just part of the community.
I also have a follow-up question, if that's all right. Novant was given an extensive list of contractual requirements as a part of the sale. Do you believe that Novant has lived up to those expectations?
I don't think they've lived up to all of them, no. And we have been having conversations and holding them accountable for the things that, in my opinion, are lacking.
Next question is for you, John Hennett. Your top issue on your campaign site is to... improve education in New Hanover County. Are you satisfied with the current performance of the local school board?
I think that one of the challenges that we're facing is we don't have a mutually agreed upon set of goals between the county commission and the school board. And I think that's probably the biggest missing component. I think that there, watching some of the meetings, I've been frustrated with the personalities take over. And I think that it's important that we have good decorum in those meetings, more professionalism. It's been one of the most frustrating things to watch. And so, I feel like that they've made a good change with the superintendent. I think the interim superintendent seems to be doing very good. He's got a great personality. It seems like the staff is responding to him in a positive way. And so, I feel like we're, we've made a turn and it feels like things are in the right direction. But again, I think that one of our big, and both my kids matriculated through the public schools. I served on the school improvement team. My wife served on the SGA, the PTA. And one of the things we were frustrated with was we were watching the scores of our school go down and to the right. And I looked at the principal, I said, "Your hair is on fire." And she didn't know what I was saying. But your scores are falling and falling fast. What's the plan? And she said, "I'm here to stop the bleeding." And so, I don't know that we are placing enough resources at our underperforming schools. And I feel like our priority of resources should be directed to those underperforming schools, either through TAs or more supplement. I think the goal should be to attract our best teachers to the lowest performing schools.
Briefly, do we have time for a short follow-up? What priorities would you like to see in education from the board and how would you fund them, given that you also have stated you want to reduce spending?
I think that getting back to the three Rs, right? Writing, reading, I would like to see us get back to our core fundamentals. I think that's a real important thing. I think we should probably look at increasing in-classroom staff, beginning at first and second grade, and then every year adding another grade, particularly in underperforming schools. So, as these kids are matriculating through, I think it's going to be hard to fix someone in 11th grade that's not meeting the standard, not proficient. And so, to fix the third grade proficiency scores, you need to start in the first grade so that when they get to third grade, they are proficient. I mean, we've got, I want to say, the last time I looked at it, 80% of black children were underperforming, under proficient on biology, for example.
My next question is for Stephanie Walker. As a Board of Education member, you've been on the other side of county votes for the school district's budget. As a member of the county commission, where would you put education spending on your priority list and where should that money come from?
On my priority list? So, yeah, I was one of the school board members, myself and another, that voted to ask for everything we needed because the way I thought about it was if you don't ask, you don't get. The fact of the matter is, our schools are underfunded on a state level and that means the county, means local has to make up for that more. And I hate that it has to be that way, but honestly, our schools have needs. And when we talk about budget, I always bring that up. What are the needs of the schools? John just talked about our low-performing schools. And I'm doing a lot of work on the turnaround task force where we are actually drilling down on the needs of our schools. And we've come up with some really good goals for that. As a commissioner, while my platform issues is funding public schools and supporting our schools because I believe those are one of our core values, I think that's an economic thing as well because if you support your public schools, you're going to attract business, you're going to support the community, you're going to raise a workforce here that wants to live and stay here. And so, I'm definitely supportive of meeting regularly with school boards one-on-one, talking about bonds, talking about whether we need to raise the level of our public schools because I do believe that our public schools are very, very valuable. We serve over 25, almost 25,000 students in our county. And we need to do a better job really looking at how we can help raise our workforce and support our community.
Just a quick follow-up. You mentioned that you're working on goals for the low-performing schools or, as you've said, high-priority schools. And knowing that those might take more resources than others, what are those goals that you've set so far?
For asking. Well, there are four main goals. Of course, there are a bunch under them. One is really puzzling out how we have a very supportive preschool system here. There's a lot of data that shows that if you support kids very early on, that really runs through their whole lives. The second one is literacy at all levels. The third one is culture and climate of our schools. And the fourth is supporting College Hope Program, perhaps, you know, that we can, when we can serve kids from the beginning to the end and if they've got a hope of school, then they'll likely be wanting to do that.
Thank you.
She gave me the axe.
Hey, candidates, we're going to do a second round of questions submitted by audience members of who've watched WECT, listened to WHQR, read Port City Daily. Again, 90 seconds. These questions will come from our reporters. And we'll bring Kelly Canoyer up first for the second round of audience questions. Kelly?
This question is for Cassidy Antaguida and it's from Nathan Dorn. If elected, how do you specifically plan to work across the political aisle with fellow board members?
So, if elected, I think it's going to be important to work with everybody that is on the Board of Commissioners and across all elected bodies in the region to make sure that we are addressing the real issues that face our county that are honestly nonpartisan issues. The housing crisis is real regardless of your political affiliation. Everybody in this county, everybody in this county deserves a quality of life regardless of their political affiliation. And I think that it's important for elected officials to do everything that they can to work together, to find common ground and to do the right thing for the people of New Hanover County. And I'm committed to doing that.
I'll ask as well, will you do anything to work with legislative partners or with other bodies of government?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think one of the things that I think is going to be really important, you know, specifically talking about schools in some of the previous questions, we've got to work with elected officials at the state level to make sure that we are receiving adequate state funding for our public schools. We absolutely need to prioritize that. And as elected officials, it's important that we represent our county and the needs that we have to do that. So, that's one example. I think it's also important, as I mentioned earlier, to partner with the city of Wilmington when it comes to addressing the housing crisis that we're experiencing here in the county, as well as environmental concerns because, you know, when stormwater is flowing through our area, it doesn't stop at the city limits. So, we need to partner on all of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, so my next question is for John. And this is from a constituent that wrote in to us. "At this time, there are no bike lanes between Monkey Junction and Carolina Beach and there are no NCDOT road signs advising motorists to share the road and bikes may use full lane. If elected, what steps would you take to work with others and NCDOT to make that section of highway safer for cyclists and pedestrians?"
Great question. I think that the section of Carolina Beach Road between Monkey Junction and Carolina Beach should resemble what you see on Highway 17 in Leland or Highway 17 in Scottsdale with the superhighway, if you call it, where there's no stoplights. It's right in, right out with U-turns. And I think in that process, the DOT would be able to put in a multi-use path. I know the county right now has funded and has begun work on connecting a trail around Monkey Junction to tie into 17th Street Extension by the library and to the Cross City Trail by the old fairgrounds across from Echo Farms, as well as down Pine Grove, Piner Road to Mason Borough Loop and then meet at Whiskey Creek where the city's path is currently under construction. But I certainly think that we should be lobbying for Carolina Beach Road to limit the number of stops, particularly when it's time for an evacuation. We've got too many stoplights in that area, too many crossings. And if we have a small fender bender, it wrecks traffic for a long time. So, I think that area of Carolina Beach Road needs to resemble what we've already seen implemented in Leland and in Scottsdale.
Thank you. And so, my next question is for you, Commissioner Barfield. And this is from an audience member. "What entity was put in place to monitor the endowment board to assure compliance with the strategic goals and objectives?"
It should have been our Board of County Commissioners. It should have been the hospital's board. That's who it should have been. But as I said it before, when three commissioners decide who they're going to appoint and not have a comprehensive conversation with the entire board, it thwarts all those plans in that process. I'm thankful that the hospital, their process is a lot more transparent and robust. They just appointed Jack Bartow to the endowment. And Jack is a former president, CEO of NHRMC, a great thinker who is not influenced by anyone other than his own self. And he's been able, I think, to influence some positive things in a short period of time on that board. But again, it should have been the Board of Commissioners and it should have been the hospital's board that appointed members that would have that conversation and oversight. And those things have not happened, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Next question is for Stephanie Walker. So, this is from a man who's lived in New Hanover County. And he says, "As a New Hanover County resident for over 30 years, he has seen much growth in the Wilmington area. One result of this growth is added vehicles on our roads. He would like to know why we don't do anything about improving our mass transportation systems."
A very good question. I know that we had a bond that failed not too long ago. And it was kind of up to the voters to decide whether we wanted to improve, you know, put money in to improve that. I'll tell you, the amount of growth that we've seen, I get quite frustrated. I live in Ogden. It takes me almost 40 minutes to get the snows cut bridge. I understand the frustration and traffic. I think that if we did have a robust transportation system, a lot more people would use it and that would help a lot. You know, we're a very small county. It's very hard to sort, you know, the traffic now because, you know, as a resident of Ogden, there are so many improvements that are going on, John's point, like we have, we're getting ready to be right turn only from Porter's Neck all the way to Gordon Road. So, I think we do. And in fact, a friend of mine who's sitting up there was talking to me today about riding the bus and, you know, and the elimination of stops and things like that. It's very difficult for folks who rely on it to get the medical appointments, et cetera, and to get to see their family in the family cemetery. So, I just think that we need to invest in a public transportation system, but we have to have the political will to do it. And it's going to be hard. I mean, some of these things are hard to do, but if we don't do it, I mean, people aren't going to stop coming here. So, you know, it used to take, it used to be a lot quicker to get across town. But now, more and more folks that are coming, the frustration is real. I think that's probably what, one of the biggest things people talk to me about is traffic. So, unless we can make some hard decisions and figure that out, you know, it's not going to change.
Candidates, we will now move to another round of questions that you all will answer. We'll give you 60 seconds. Again, as I told you beforehand, I'm not going to cut you off directly at 60, but I'm not going to let you start another thought process after that. And we're going to start with Ms. Walker here first with this next question. Ms. Walker, if I can. Development is at the top of mind in the Cape Fear region with a housing shortage and many residents say they're tired of what they call overdevelopment. Public officials often say that they support so-called smart development. I'd like to ask you how you would define smart development as something that you would support?
Thank you. I look at this development question as two sides of the same coin. We have an issue with affordability. We have an issue with inventory. I saw a recent study that talked about how we were the number one metro area for new units, but it has not brought the prices down. So, we have to think about how we have a variety of options for folks, especially that live here, that can't afford to live here anymore. A lot of teachers, a lot of folks actually don't live in the county because they can't afford to do it. So, we really need a lot more options. We need to figure that out within the community, the commission, but also regionally, we need to really have a discussion about it. The other side of that coin is environmental. As an Ogden resident, and I'll keep saying this because we get a really heavy rain and we get a lot of water. And so, clearcutting is a problem. When you remove a tree, that's 20, something like 30,000 to 50,000 gallons of water, a tree will soak up. So, the more tree you remove, the more wetlands you fill in, the water has to go somewhere. And that's a concern.
Ma'am, Mr. Hennan, I'd like to ask you, sir, how would you define smart development as something that you would, as a county commissioner, approve?
My understanding of smart development and the core tenets of smart development is increased density, increased height. And what we find is a lot of neighborhoods, established neighborhoods, when somebody comes in with a dense development adjacent to their neighborhood, they're opposed to it. And I want to protect the integrity of the existing neighborhoods. Smart development also includes increased transit. And then the thought is that it protects undeveloped spaces, green space. But if you don't control that green space, it's not going to be protected. So, it's going to cost money to either preserve, protect, conserve, or make a park space or green space. I think we have to make sure everybody understands the supply and demand dynamics in our market. We do a great job at demand. We have beautiful beaches, a vibrant downtown that I'm proud of. UNC Wilmington was growing at a pace of 1,000 net new students per year for the last seven years. And we've got great companies like GE and Encino and MegaCorp that work with both Cape Fear Community College and UNCW to retain these students who stay here and remain employed with good-paying jobs. That's our demand. We're not doing a great job on supply. And so, I think that's where our barrier is.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rivenbark and Mr. Scalise would be third and fourth in this rotation. They are not here, so I'll move to Ms. Antaguida. How would you define smart development, Ms. Antaguida, in something that you would support as a county commissioner?
When I think about smart development and what we need here in the county, I really think about intentional development. We need to be intentional about what our vision is for the county. Where do we need to build with higher density? Where do we not need to build? What do we need to consider when we are looking at transit and transportation? Where do we have infrastructure in the county that will allow for us to build in smart ways? And so, when I, again, when I think about the intentions that we need to have as a county, I think we also need to start looking at the cumulative impact of development rather than just taking a look project by project over what's going to happen in terms of transportation and impact on infrastructure and schools. We need to start taking a cumulative view of what we need in the county and what's being proposed. And we need to have a framework for making those decisions so that we are actually being smart when we develop. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Barfield, how would you define smart development in something that you would support as county commissioner?
Guess I need to ask the question I always ask folks. By a show of hands, how many people in this room were not born or raised in this community? If you weren't born or raised, please raise your hand. You're the problem. When I grew up here, we didn't have a traffic problem. We could get around town so very easily until you came. And I say that as a joke, but recognizing the beautiful quality of life that our community has to offer has brought so many people to New Hanover County because they want a piece of the pie, so to speak. You know, people often say we are losing our green space. I remind folks that that green space belongs to someone because they're a private property owner. The county's green space would be Airley Gardens, Longleaf Park, Veterans Park, the land that we own. But the other lands you see around here belong to someone. And most developers are looking for as much density as they can possibly get to offset the cost of building in this environment. When you look at Brunswick County, they're growing rapidly. And I'm thankful that things are taking place in that place as opposed to our community at the pace it's happening in Brunswick County. But when you look at some of these new neighborhoods, homes are stacked on top of homes. And I live in our 15 neighborhood. I'm thankful to have enough space between me and my neighbor when I'm cooking a steak, they can't smell exactly what I have on my grill.
Okay, Mr. Barfield, for calling me an outsider, you will have 55 seconds to answer the next question, sir. Couldn't resist. Mr. Hennan, I'm going to ask you to respond first to the next umbrella question, if I can, sir. The Cape Fear region is one of the fastest-growing regions in North Carolina and some projections show up to 80,000 new residents here by the year 2040. Traffic is already a major complaint for people living in the area. So, the question, what do you see as the future for transportation in New Hanover County?
That's a great question. According to Bureau of Labor Statistics, there's 95,000 primary jobs in New Hanover County. And half of those jobs live outside of New Hanover County. So, in the morning, if you're in congestion or if you're in traffic and congestion after work, that's our workforce coming and going. So, I think that one of the things we have to look forward, look to is how does new development incorporate workforce housing? And these are our entry-level careers, police, fire, first responders, teachers, nurses, our hospitality industry. If we want to protect our tourism industry, we're going to have to make sure our tourism employees have a place to live in the area. So, it's important that we get workers living closer to home. I think that when it comes to transportation, as the demand for public transportation in the unincorporated goes, we certainly have to increase our investment in mass transit in the unincorporated area. But when it comes to affordable housing, I think we all need to be working from the same definition. Public subsidized- subsidized housing probably won't work great in an unincorporated section of the county because it's not walkable to retail services, it's not within a mile of a grocery store, and we don't have existing transit in the area. So we have to make sure that we're putting the right type of product in the right area.
So what I'm hearing you say, then, is mass transportation is where the investment needs to be made as far as public transportation is concerned?
Well, and I think we also need to partner with the developers who are building the single-family homes to make sure that we're including workforce housing for our workforce so that they don't choose to live beyond the county line. 28% of our employees live beyond the MSA, so they're in the car for 40, 45 minutes just to get to the county line.
Okay, all right. Ms. Antiguida, I'd like to ask you, what do you see as the future for transportation in New Hanover County?
I think in New Hanover County and our region as a whole, as I've stated earlier, we need to focus on building a robust public transportation system that serves the needs of our region. 50,000 people a day drive into New Hanover County to go to work. All of those people, for the most part, come in cars because that is the only option that they have. So we have, we have got to build a more robust public transportation system here in the county. I think the first step in doing that is getting community members and business leaders in the area back on the WAVE board so that they have a say in the future of where WAVE goes. Additionally, we need to look at alternative transportation methods like bicycles and pedestrians. And I think to address that, we need to focus and invest on continuing to connect all of the bike pathways and the pedestrian pathways that we have in the county. We need to think, oh, I will finish. Yeah, I was just going to say, we need to think about everything that we can do to allow people to get where they need to go and not have it be in a car.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Barfield, what do you see as the future for transportation in New Hanover County?
The work that DOT is doing now, again, making sure that MLK Parkway traffic will flow a whole lot smoother. It'll take place within the next five years. When it comes to WAVE transit, we talk a lot about public transportation here. I've served on WAVE's board for 14 years, and we've had a perception problem there. Growing up here, it's always been looked at as poor people ride the bus. But when you go to your major metro cities, your business people ride the bus. And until we change that perception, and WAVE has tried everything they can to change that perception, the one challenge that they have is most buses were coming every 60 minutes. And you don't create choice riders when you have a 60-minute headway. In your major cities, the bus comes every 20 minutes, and every 20 minutes creates choice riders. At the same time, the county, in my opinion, we have not invested, what I would say, our fair share in WAVE transit, recognizing that the drivers work for another company, not WAVE. They work for a unionized company. And the WAVE staff or the administrators that are there, and finding ways to increase funding this so we can hire more bus drivers for that particular company, but also getting more buses in would increase the headways and make sure we have 20-minute headways versus 60-minute headways.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Walker, what do you see as the future for transportation in New Hanover County?
There are a lot of things that are components of this. Obviously, the first discussion is how we improve our current system of busing. That includes making it, making the bus stops a little bit better to stand at, not just to stick in the road, maybe have covering. That would be good. I think the city and the county have done a great job. Since I was younger, you couldn't, it was a lot harder to walk and bike. They've done a great job with the Cross City Trail. I think if we can improve that, keep improving that, which I know that they've done. We've been on the Parks and Gardens together. So, I mean, we know the great work they're doing. I would like to see more of that. Obviously, nobody's brought up the bridge, but, I mean, I've seen a couple of plans, think of something you posted earlier about, you know, having a place you can walk across there. Our school board just, I think, we got a offer to buy a right-of-way for rail, for passenger rails. So I think that's coming. It probably won't be for another decade, but, you know, that's all coming. Those are the things that I see that have to be done.
Ma'am, Ms. Antiguida, I'd like to ask you the next question that all of you will respond to. I asked you earlier in a show of hands about whether you would increase property taxes in order to pay for some infrastructure needs. I want to dig a little bit deeper into this if I can. What, if any, needs infrastructure or any other needs for the county, would you consider raising property taxes to pay for?
So I think that, first of all, any discussion about raising property taxes, I think, first of all, it's not necessarily like a yes or no. I think we've got to look at those needs. So I appreciate this question. When it comes to infrastructure, I think it's important to look at what we need in terms of water and sewer as we continue to grow in the county. That's going to be better for residents. It's going to protect our environment rather than having folks running on wells or septic tanks. I think that we need to also look at how we support our public schools as we continue to grow, and as we've already talked about, you know, the needs that we have around traffic and transportation. When it comes to considering a property tax increase, I think it's going to be important to assess what we need, where we're going in the future, and understand that, you know, there are going to be times when the responsible thing to do is going to be to increase property taxes, but I think that that's a decision that we need to weigh carefully and not just jump into as assuming that's the only way to get infrastructure in place.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hennett, I'd like to ask you the same question. What, if any, needs or goals would you consider raising property taxes to pay for?
I'm not a fan of raising taxes at all. I think that there's an important project that we need to be doing a better job of lobbying the state, and that would be the widening of Castle Lane Road. It's designed, it's ready to go, it's not funded. But what is funded on Castle Lane Road is the economic development incentives of GE hiring 500 new jobs. We have to be, do a better job of communicating to the state our needs on infrastructure, especially when it's tied to economic development incentive and projects. Castle Lane Road already scores at an F. GE is one of our most valued employees, and we just need to do a better job. I'm not, again, I'm not in favor of raising taxes at all. Our infrastructure, the county doesn't pay for roads, doesn't build roads, doesn't maintain roads. That's a state project in the unincorporated area. Schools are something that I've already raised my hand on for a bond referendum, or I believe the endowment should certainly step in in that case, especially if we have a plan. We can't build, we can't fix all the schools at once. They have to be done sequentially. So we build River Lights, we re-look at Mary C. Williams there, we rebuild Mary C. Williams, we move Alderman there, we rebuild Alderman, we move Pine Valley there, we rebuild Pine Valley. So I think we can do that sequentially with the partnership of the endowment.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Walker, what, if any, needs or goals would you consider raising property taxes in order to fund?
Well, nobody likes to talk about wanting to raise taxes. I feel like politically, that is always something that people, I thought it was a gotcha question at first, but I understand. We are the eighth wealthiest county. We might not need to raise property taxes if we, we keep getting people come here, obviously, you know, and our housing prices keep, you know, going up the way they are. But that's something we need, we need to really look at on a case-by-case basis. The fact of the matter is, things need to be paid for, and how do you do that? You can get the state involved to deal a bit more with schools. That would be really great. We have an endowment as well, you know, as the eighth wealthiest county in the state. There are things that we can do that don't necessarily mean raising taxes, but there are things that we do need. We just talked about a bunch of them tonight. Schools, transportation, how do they get paid for? So I would like to see what is presented before I would make a decision on anything like that.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Barfield, what, if any, needs or goals would you consider raising property taxes to pay for?
Apparently, none. We have no need to raise taxes in our county. We have $300 million in an account from the sale of a hospital that will cover any future needs that we have for a long time. And right now, we're bringing in roughly $12 to $15 million a year in interest on that money. And we've been reinvesting those dollars into things to keep our tax rate low. So right now, there's nothing that we would need to raise taxes for because we have an abundance of resources sitting right there unlike any other county in the state. No other county can say in this state that they have $300 million sitting aside in a revenue stabilization fund that will make sure that their revenues never have a problem for quite a long time.
Thank you, sir. Candidates, we're going to move on to give you one more chance to address the voting public here at the CFCC Union Station Auditorium, those who may be watching on our live stream or listening live on the radio. You have 60 seconds for a closing statement, and we're going to go in reverse alphabetical order here, so we will go for her closing statement this evening, candidate Stephanie Walker. Stephanie, you have 60 seconds, ma'am.
Very much. W doesn't usually go first, but thank you. I'm a proven leader. I've been in office since 2020. I have been part of this community for a very long time, especially politically. I've been on plenty of appointed boards and committees. I can see the future in New Hanover County. I can see how good it looks. We are in a really good place to do that. And we could have the best schools in the state. We could have, we could be a place that businesses want to come to, but we have to figure a lot of things out first. And I think I would be a very good person to do that and work on, I work well with others, even during hard times. Being on the school board has been difficult this last four years, but I know that you have to work with people to get things done. And so I believe I am one of the best people to do that and the most qualified.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, for her closing statement this evening, we will go to County Commissioner candidate Cassidy Antiguida. Ms. Antiguida, you have 60 seconds, ma'am.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight and asking such great questions. I guess in closing, what I would like to say is, you know, go back to the reason that I'm running for a county commissioner. And that's really because I want to be able to look my daughter in the eye 20 years from now and tell her I did everything I could to make New Hanover County a great place for her to grow up and to live. I bring a wealth of experience from an industry that we haven't seen on the Board of Commissioners before. I have spent a career managing change, helping organizations scale, and managing growth. And we're at a time in New Hanover County where that's experience and leadership that we need on the board. I believe we need a fresh, new perspective on the board, and that's something that I can and will bring. So thank you all again very much, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, for his closing statement this evening, New Hanover County Commissioner candidate John Hennett. Mr. Hennett, 60 seconds, sir.
Thank you again to the media consortium for hosting us. I look at the media as a partner in a campaign process. You're giving us a great audience, a great opportunity, so thank you. I've been a small business owner, so I've created jobs. I've been in economic development. I've created jobs. And in my private sector, I've helped create workforce housing, and we never use taxpayer dollars for any of that. So I think that I know how to get this done. I'm a public servant my entire professional life. I'm looking at my friend here. You used to work at Encore Magazine. We used to talk restaurants all the time. So I've been a committed public servant my entire life, and I agree, I think we need fresh blood on the commission, and I think we need somebody who has the ability to get things done. And I think in some way, we need more common sense leadership. We need more questions. And I feel like it's time for a little turnover, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, for his closing statement this evening, New Hanover County Commissioner candidate Jonathan Barfield. Mr. Barfield, you have 60 seconds, sir.
Proven trusted leadership. My figured author John Maxwell says it best, that everything rises and falls on leadership. Everything rises and falls on leadership. I've served as chair of our board on four separate occasions, vice chair on three separate occasions. I've served chair twice with a majority Republican board, recognizing the fact that I know how to work across the aisle. But proven trusted leadership. If you follow my record, my yes is always a yes and my no is always a no. You know where I stand on the issues, and I'll continue to fight for families in New Hanover County, as I've always done. This is my home. I'm a 1984 graduate of another high school, just had my 40th classroom reunion this past weekend, and my goal is to make our community the best that it can be by investing your resources to allow it to grow. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. You can visit my website at barfieldforcommission.com, barfieldforcommission.com. Again, proven trusted leadership. Everything rises and falls on leadership.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, would you give a round of applause to these candidates who not only signed up to run but showed up for this event here this evening? A couple of reminders, if we can. The voter registration deadline is October the 11th, so make sure that if you have not registered, you do by that date. If you miss that date, you can register and vote during one-stop early voting. That begins Thursday, October the 17th, and runs through the Saturday before Election Day. And don't forget, you do need to show photo ID in order to vote. You can get one now free at the Board of Elections. If you don't have one or don't get one, you can fill out an ID exception form and vote a provisional ballot. If you do that, you have to make sure that that's back to the County Board of Elections office with your photo ID on Election Day by 7:30. Additionally, the deadline to request an absentee by mail ballot is Tuesday, October the 29th. The deadline to return that has changed this year. You have to have that back at your County Board of Elections office by 7:30 when the polls close on Election Night. And of course, Election Day is November the 5th. Once again, thank you to the candidates. Thank you to my fellow reporters at the media group that we've put together. We appreciate you joining us. We're going to take about a 10-minute break, try to get the next set of candidates for the New Hanover County School Board forum, and then we'll be back with you live on our live stream and on the air in about 10 minutes. Thank you, everybody.